Thank you, folks. I do apologize to Councilman De Niro, staff, and members of the community for the delay. But let's go ahead and jump right into the meeting, if that's okay. We do have a few members of the community that have requested to speak. And I'll call the first one up. We do have a microphone there before you. And you have up to three minutes, although don't feel compelled to speak the full three if you get your message across within a lesser amount of time. The first person that we have here is Smitty, followed by Ed Marashi.
Good evening. It's Smitty, Sir. And I have three questions. Okay. And two specifically for the chief, and one for the city manager who's not here. Anyway, business cards, police business cards, are they required by the police on the street to have them?
And just so you know, sir, right now, the public comment time is an opportunity for you to share information to us. We can make note of it. It's not necessarily an exchange.
Yes, I'm just asking a question.
Sure.
Okay. Requests for supervisors. When can a person stop by? Police officer request a supervisor to be present? And is there going to be some kind of written procedure for the courtyard opening for the homeless? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we do have police personnel who can, on the side, be able to address those questions. But just so as to keep time to, just a very tight time, respect everyone's schedule, and the other speakers, we want to make sure that we're receiving information. And the next person again is Mr. Marashi.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Ed Marashi, 2139 North Flower Street. Just three ideas I wanted to pass out there real quick. Number one is, we were having a meeting with the police department discussing the illegal marijuana dispensaries. I want to thank them for the time and energy they put into talking to some of the neighborhood leaders. One of the ideas in researching that, I noticed, was that, you know, there were 20 lottery drawings made for legitimate ones, and only about 10 of them, maybe a few more, have actually implemented it. So there are a lot that haven't been implemented yet. And I was wondering, if you thought about taking those 20, the 10 or whatever that haven't been implemented yet, and saying, okay, you've got six months, or a year, or whatever, to implement them, and if not, we're going to turn that back into the lottery, so that maybe we can take some of the illegal marijuana dispensaries who might win that lottery and actually become a legitimate business, and move out of some of the neighborhood areas. So just an idea. The second one was, I see that police body cameras is on the agenda. I just wanted to throw out, in the CommLink meeting, we had Sheriff Sandra Hutchison there. And a question was asked of her if the sheriff's department is implementing body cameras. And she says they have them in the patrol cars, and right now, they are looking at implementing them. So I just wanted to see that if maybe you, Commander Veramontes and the police department, share what you learned with the sheriff's department that might help them out. Thirdly, I see that on here, we have customer service. One thing I've always thought about, every time I hear maybe gunshots in the riverbed, or a lot of sirens go chasing down the street, there's never a place where the neighborhood can look up to see, hey, am I in danger? Am I worried? Should I not be outside wandering around? Should I lock myself in the house, or whatever? And it would be interesting, if it would be neat, to implement some sort of warning that if there was something serious going on in the neighborhood, you put it on next door, or whatever, so that the average citizen can look at that and not wander into, say, a gunfight, or something like that, at one of the parks, or something. So just a way of alerting the neighborhood would be nice. That's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Marashi. Great minds think alike, as I say. With regard to your question, just as a point of information, on the dispensaries, we are doing just that, as far as those who have not. And we can provide, again, more information offline. Thank you for your input feedback there. Chris Schmidt, followed by Chris Schmidt. So you can go ahead and, followed by Chris Schmidt. So you can go ahead and speak on all three of your items right now. We have, you're interested in speaking on items four, five, and six?
Correct.
You can go ahead and address this now.
The first one regarding item number four, customer service implementation. I wanted to talk about some of the experiences we have calling the dispatch with the Santa Ana Police Department. I would say it's about 80% successful, 20% not so satisfactory. I can give you several examples. Recently, we've been having issues in my neighborhood because there are apartments across the street from us, and people are parking in our neighborhood, so much so that they're blocking crosswalks, handicap ramps, and fire hydrants. We've been working with the traffic engineering department to paint the curbs red, but they say they have to show a repeated offending. So we have to get vehicles ticketed. Two weeks ago, I called SAPD Dispatch, the non-emergency line, and reported a vehicle that was parked within 15 feet of the fire hydrant. The dispatcher kept challenging me and trying to talk me out of it. Well, how do you know it's within 15 feet? Because I'm looking at it right now. Well, can the fire department get to it? That's not the point. The point is, California Vehicle Code says you cannot park a vehicle within 15 feet of a fire hydrant. And if you don't come out here and ticket it, I can't get the curb painted red because Public Works says there's not enough incidents happening there. I know of one Spanish-speaking lady who had an intruder in her backyard. And when she asked them to come out, apparently the dispatcher told her, well, if you don't tell us your name, we're not going to go out for a call to service. I think that's very, very scary, knowing that. I know that some people feel very intimidated to call because when they go, let's say their neighbor is having a party, and it's very loud, and they call to report the loud music from electronically amplified devices, that when the officer shows up, that people at the house are going to ask him, why are you here? And the officer says, well, one of your neighbors reported you. You're creating animosity amongst neighbors, and therefore, they don't feel like calling anymore because they're afraid they're going to be ratted out. So I appreciate and respect all the work the police department does. I understand we're understaffed, and I understand it can be stressful at times. But when you call the non-emergency line, and you know that you're calling it, it's not very appropriate when the person keeps telling you, well, we're very busy, we have a lot of emergencies. I know that. That's why I called the non-emergency line. So regarding that, I would respectfully request that we maybe do a few more discussions with dispatches and let them understand how important it is to provide quality customer service to the residents of Santa Ana. So that's for number four. Number five, community-oriented policing.
And Mr. Schmidt, you have an overall three minutes, so...
There's five different items I'm asked to speak on.
But it's the...
Per item.
No, it's three minutes to speak, to address the committee as a whole.
I don't get three minutes per item?
No, it's not that. That's not the case.
I believe it's each agenda item, I get three minutes.
No, it's three minutes to be able to address. So we'll give you a couple, another minute, if you can go ahead and condense some of your comments.
Yeah, sure. Earlier this year, myself and several other Santa Ana residents put on community-oriented policing forums for Commander Kaminsky. We had several hundred people show up. Councilmember Tenahara was at the Latino Health Access one. Santa Ana Police Department has partnered with Chapman University. They were supposed to do some work over the summer, and they didn't do it. One of the things was, we gave people these personal interview requests. About 60 or 70 people turned them in. Chapman University was supposed to interview them during the summer. They did not do that. I made promises to people that their opinions and their voices would be heard regarding community-oriented policing. I am very upset now. I have several people, some of them here today, going, hey, whatever happened with that community-oriented policing forum thing you put on, Chris? I don't want to stop the process. I've spoken to Commander Kaminsky. We need to move forward with Chapman University. But I think we need to make sure that this goes forward, and the residents of Santa Ana are heard. Last item, number six, I would just like to know how many full-time park rangers we're going to hire. From my understanding, there's only one part-time, and he's going on medical leave soon. Last Saturday, I had to call police at 6:00 PM at Centennial Park because a gentleman was urinating in the sports field in front of kids. I would like to know how many full-time park rangers we're going to hire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Thank you for understanding as well, condensing your comments. Appreciate that, respecting the time of others' speakers as well. Ms. Hamilton, Connie Hamilton is our final speaker.
Good afternoon. I wanted to address something that Chris talked about, but in a kind of a different aspect, the customer service improvements. I'm not sure what that's going to be about, and it's hard to talk about before. But I will say this, as Commander Kaminsky knows, and Chief Rojas, I do have some suggestions and problems with the way the customer service is implemented. I think we can do a lot better, and I think as soon as we're staffed up properly, that it will be better. But have we thought about doing some kind of a survey, customer survey, regarding people that have interactions with the police? Because I think right now, it probably wouldn't be very good because of the, all the time, the call for service, et cetera. But I think once we staff up, the things will look a lot better. So we need some type of a, some type of a level from the beginning that we realize it is getting a lot better, so I can suggest that. Now, the volunteers in policing can probably help with that. I mean, that's nothing that you'd need sworn officers for, just to follow up on people that had a call, call for service, or people that came to the station to file, to file a complaint, and to just see how we can improve it. I think it will actually get a lot better, but we need some type of a point to begin with that we know that it is getting better. Is there, well, I can't really ask you directly, but I am curious about that, if there's any type of customer service survey for the people that file with the police department. I don't know. So anyway, just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Appreciate your comment and good question. I think some of those will be addressed during the presentation discussion by council. With that, we'll go ahead and move to item, the first item on the agenda, which is the approval of minutes. We'll have motion.
Motion approved.
Second, back admission motion carries. Item number two is city surplus budget review. Some of you may recall, at the last council meeting, this was something that council members requested. Come before this committee, there's been some discussion about surplus funds, and having some of those funds directed towards several uses, one of those being public safety. So please, with the others, that's the item you'll be presenting for us.
Thank you, Councilmember Benavides. I will present a brief overview of the city's process for surplus determination, as well as the current surplus projections and the proposed recommendations, which I think is of interest, obviously. Our current allocation schedule, when the fiscal year ends on June 30th, we go through a process where we are required to accrue all revenues received back to the proper fiscal year. So through end of August, we would accrue all revenues back to the fiscal year, in this case, 1516. And currently, we're accruing all our expenditures back to the prior fiscal year as well. Once we close in September, we then do any final adjustments in October, and our auditors then come in and look at our books, just to make sure that everything that we've recorded is basically in its own proper box, or if that we have not placed revenues and/or expenditures in the wrong year, for the most part. So that's why by December, when we get our final audit opinion, we would come back to the city council with the final surplus value. If you recall, last year, this just kind of gives you a highlight. Last year, we had 11.25 million in surplus allocations, and those were allocated to the various categories that you see there listed. For the current fiscal year, as we end 1516, we are currently anticipating revenues at about 220, and expenditures at about 212. Currently, we're anticipating 7.88 million in a surplus, but our expenditure month has not closed, so this number may still change. Some of the important parts that impacting our surplus for this fiscal year is that the state of California actually notified us in June of the triple flip. This is their true-up of the bond that they issued back in 2003, when they were going through their fiscal crisis. And now it has come to an end, and so they're finalizing all the final revenue payments to the cities, which is why our surplus ballooned for that purpose. The variance on expenditures right now, we anticipate about 800,000, but it's still, that may still go up. And right now, we're looking at about 7.8 million. And then finally, in terms of what council, I think, would be of interest, is currently, these are the recommended amounts for the various categories, what the city manager will be proposing to the city council. The first one is the, having 1.4 million go to police overtime and to expedite the hiring of police officers. Currently, the city has two major capital projects with the county of Orange. One is the 800 megahertz component, and this covers their partnership costs. The total value for the city is about 6.6 million, so that for the following fiscal year, we anticipate paying about 1.4 million. The other big, obviously, is the animal shelter, which is going to cost the city about 7 million, and our component for the next fiscal year would be about 750,000. Recently, you approved the civic center security enhancements for public and employee safety, which amounted to 700,000. And then the two major assessment appropriations, it's the water transfer to the general fund, as well as the graffiti abatement, those have to be backfilled, and the recommendation was obviously to be backfilled from the surplus of 2.4 and 1.2 million. Right now, the total value of all these allocations comes to 7.88 million. So for the most part, that's the presentation. If you have any questions, be more than happy to answer.
I do have a question for our chief. You know, it's no secret, I've been vocal about it. I have worked with a lot of Police Officer Association presidents, and I've never run into the mannerism that this particular individual has come forward with. So years ago, we negotiated. This is what the board, the council, has been very supportive to our police department. Virtually everything our police department has asked, we've given. And one of them was the 12, three-day, 12-hour shifts. And I just feel that it's being used against us now. And so the reason I say that is because I want to find out if that is one of the reasons why we're having some shortages at times during shifts, if we are having shortages. So I would like for you and maybe the city manager, because negotiations are going to start in January, and so I think that that's something that should be possibly on the table on the city side, to see if, if public safety is truly the concern, if that's truly the concern, then there has to be a teamwork approach into increasing salaries and increasing our opportunity to be able to man our streets. And I think I'm going to make that a very transparent conversation, because I think our public needs to know. And so that's something that I want to ask, because as we put in 1.4 million for overtime and hiring a police officer, all for it, all for it, I just want to make sure that we are maximizing our boots on the street as we continue to do that. So I think there's got to be a give and take. I mean, I remember one of the arguments that was being made was the pay, the extra pay for the night shift, the differential pay for the night shift. And then it had occurred to me, I was like, wait a minute, we negotiated this. And part of what the, I think, two Police Officer Association board members had agreed to was defer that, but pay us our lunch. And so that was the give and take. Again, whatever they wanted, you know, but now, we're, the argument is that we don't have enough officers on the street, and we are hiring more officers than ever before. The community needs to know that. That's not an opinion, that's a fact. So what I want to know is, are we maximizing the amount of officers on the street, and is this something that we should put on the table? That's just a question that I have.
No, and I do appreciate all the support that we have received from council, and I know the majority of the men and women of the police department do appreciate that support. You know, of course, I can't speak to any conduct or behavior by a POA president. You know, definitely disappointing from my perspective, but in terms of public safety, yes, I mean, our officers do have some great benefits, and that schedule was a give and take years ago. And I know they're very appreciative to be able to work that schedule, but I do understand the concern, and we'll definitely look at any alternative schedules from the 410 all the way to the 58, which I know, I don't feel that's ideal for my officers, but, you know, at the direction, I will certainly take a look at that. And if there is a crisis in terms of staffing, as it's being portrayed by some, I want to be the first one to stand up here and address it, whether it's for me on downwork and patrol. But what I can tell you is, I'm not seeing it from the same perspective as the POA president has portrayed, but we will definitely do that research and report back.
And at the end of the day, chief, your opinion does matter to this council. I mean, you're the professional, you've been doing this for quite some time. You're initiating some new techniques, new strategies, and change is always difficult. So I want that report, but I also want your opinion on what's the best way to police our streets.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman De Niro. Very good points and comments. And I would echo that it would be important for us to be able to analyze and look at all options. There have been some questions raised as to whether we have enough officers out controlling the streets. A lot of that has been coming from the leadership at the POA, and so...
Chairman, just for the record, the instructions that I have given my command staff and the deputy chief in charge of field operations is to fill all patrol positions with overtime to ensure that we have adequate staffing.
Okay. Great. That's good to know. And to, as we look at the longer-term impacts and solutions, we definitely, and we'll have a report with regard to hiring, it's been a recurring report, because we have been seeing the updates of progress that we've been making over the last about 18 months or so, both on funds allocated, on efforts to promote the positions within the city, on even marketing firms that are specifically focused on recruiting for law enforcement positions. So we're making those efforts. The, again, overall, longer-term, looking at what the, what potential solutions, looking at all scenarios, including the staffing schedules, I think, would be important to be able to consider. When it comes to the items that were presented here, feedback that I want to provide, there were a number of different items, as it pertains to law enforcement, including hiring and overtime, at 1.4, also the megahertz, the 800-megahertz system, the county, such a couple others. We're being able to, initially, there was some discussion about, was it about 1.5 million that we were initially thinking about when council, when it was first presented to us and council was, made the comments and gave direction for some of the surplus, or the surplus funds to be directed toward public safety? Was it about 1.5 that was being discussed at that time?
At that time, the projection was between 1.5 and 3 million.
Okay. So now that we've seen, you know, more than doubled potentially that amount, I think one is we can still provide some resources towards public safety. I think it is important also that we, how, that we look at all aspects of public safety. One of the things that we've talked about as a council is the fact that a lot of what we need to be doing is preventative work, is ensuring that there are programs, activities, public spaces, parks, places where, community centers, places where our young people can engage in positive activities that would ultimately prevent them from ending up in the situation where they're involved in questionable activities and raising issues of concern, public safety concern. So with these one-time funds, some of the, one of the other things that we've talked about, we have an opportunity to provide some enhancements related to prevention. There are a number of parcels, as an example, that the city currently holds and is looking to either market or repurpose. So pocket parks, again, looking at any community center enhancements, looking at programs or activities, or things that we can do, public spaces, that would engage our community into something that would be, again, beneficial, positive, and ultimately would also be with one-time funds that we could invest that would be sustainable over the long term. If we do a skate park, a pocket park, a, some type of other community amenity, it's something that will only, will outlive just this short, one-time use of these funds. So I want to make sure that we look at all options and bring that to consideration for, or bring that for council consideration when we look at the options and what we're going to do with these surplus funds. Any additional comments from...
I agree. I think we have to look at other opportunities that can really benefit our community.
So that's just some of the feedback for us to take back. There's no other comments from staff on this item. I don't think that there was any specific action, other than having the presentation before, public safety, allowing the public and the committee to speak to that. Then we'll go ahead and move to the third item, which is body, police body cameras. And chief?
Yes, Commander Veramontes has a short update, and I do want to publicly recognize Commander Veramontes for his work on this project, and we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, and he will let you know where we're at. Thank you, Jason.
Perfect.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll be talking about agenda item number two as soon as it gets pulled up here. It'll be, like the chief said, an update on the body worn camera program. And specifically, I'm going to be talking about the pilot program that we began at the police department. Probably that one there. That's definitely not it. September 27th, public safety meeting, the top, right? That one? Yeah.
We have the hard copy. We can just go off the hard copy. Does the board have a hard copy of that?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, I do. Okay. So the first slide is titled RFP process. So it's just a brief overview of what we did when we went through the RFP process. We had six submissions total. Six vendors submitted an RFP, and the grading criteria for the RFP covered the six items of cost, storage abilities, system abilities, system hardware, experience of the vendor, and responsiveness to the RFP. So out of those six submissions, we whittled it down to two, with the highest scoring, the top two highest-scoring vendors being invited to participate in a pilot program. The first vendor is Taser, who probably a lot of people are familiar with. They're a well-established company that's been in the body worn camera business for quite a while. They're one of the leading vendors in body worn cameras, and they're well-known for being, having cutting-edge equipment and software. They're constantly updating their, their software especially, as it pertains to body worn cameras, more so than the Taser less-lethal weapons that they originally started the company with. And they have a unique partnership with a company called Evidence.com, which makes them very attractive for a lot of, a lot of cities and municipal departments. The other vendor was Discover IT Solutions, and they are actually new to the, to the business. In fact, if we went with this company, they'd be, we would be their first body worn camera, camera customer. They have, they have roots in fixed cameras, and now they're trying to get into this business. So they rated very high in the cost analysis portion of it, and which is what brought them up into the top two. They have a different effective, it seems like a unique and cost-effective storage solution, and that's something that we're evaluating right now in the pilot program. But again, very new to the business itself.
Commander, when you say, in your presentation here, you say it's a local company, how local is that?
They're based out of Irvine, and a sister company that they've formed a partnership with is out of, I believe, Escondido. Whereas Taser is nationally, they're based in Washington, Arizona, they have a few facilities.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So our body worn pilot program began on September... So our body worn pilot program began on September 19th and is scheduled to go to actually now October 12th. So what we did is, we asked each vendor, Taser and Discover IT, to submit eight cameras, and what we did is we spread those eight cameras out from each vendor for a total of 16 to cover various shifts. Our target was to put four on day shift, four on cover shift, which is the 2:00 to 2:30, 2:00 in the afternoon, 2:30 a.m., and four on our graveyard shift, a couple with the gang detectives and a couple with the motor officers. And we got pretty close to that. They're widely spread out throughout different shifts and even specialized details to include our downtown detail. All three officers, three of the officers have the body worn camera in the downtown area, and they've already been able to provide some really good feedback from that area. So the focus of the pilot program is to compare these systems and then get an officer assessment on things such as ease of use, the durability of the body worn camera system, the comfort for the officers that are wearing them, the battery life, video and sound quality, the capacity for the video and audio. And then essential to the program is the integration that it will have with the Orange County District Attorney's Office. There'll be a lot of uploading of digital evidence, and with that, for court preparation and things of that nature, it's very important that it works with the DA's office in the court preparation aspect of it. And then also the evidence management, how the officer's able to tag the videos and search for them, so on and so forth. The other half of the assessment will be, one that will be done by the city and the police department IT departments, and that'll consist of a technical presentation by each of the vendors, who will speak to things such as storage capabilities, their perception of their equipment's quality of video and sound, the connectivity and software as far as that, as far as the IT portion goes, and then how that integrates with what we currently have here in the city and the PD as well. And the panel will consist of, like I said, PD, IT, and city IT, so that's going to be very important. Once that's done, we'll have a final assessment. It'll actually be more of a 60/40, so 60% will lie with the officer's assessment, while 40% will be more along the lines of the technical presentation, and we'll come up with a score based upon those two. I included a small example of what a grading sheet will look like for the pilot program, and it just lists basically those things that I had listed earlier from each, for each vendor to, for each officer to score for each vendor, and at the end, we'll take an average of those. Our anticipated timeline, we were able to nail it down pretty solid here now. So we finished up the policy around September 7th. I think there's been maybe one minor change since then, but pretty much that thing is done. The training for the pilot program officers occurred September 8th to September 18th, and then we launched our program on September 19th with officers wearing them in the field, those 16 officers. We will have the IT presentations, October 13th and 14th, by both vendors, and then if we need to, we'll go ahead and take a visit to each of the sites to see what the company looks like, what kind of support they have on their end to be able to support a program such as ours, and we'll evaluate that as well. We're targeting November 1st or in that general time to start with the RFC, RFC process, and then by December, we're hoping to have the contracts set in place, our equipment delivered, and the beginning of the training sessions for the officers. Granted, that is over the holidays, so we figure, just to be safe, our complete implementation at the outside should be by beginning to mid-February 2017. So it's, from here on, it's going to move rapidly. We're really excited about the pilot program. We think, already, we've seen a lot of the success, and from here on out, things should move pretty quickly to our target date of February 2017. If you have any questions on this, if there are any?
Councilman? No, I just, I'm excited that we're moving forward in this fashion, and I've always believed this type of technology is, I know that for the community, they see it as a way to assure that policing is using the proper strategies and techniques, but I also see it as a way to protect our officers, and I think that this is a step in the right direction. At the end of the day, it's about, officers want to come home at night. They want to have a safe night, they want to be able to come home, they want to do good for a community, and I think the community wants to just be treated like human beings with respect. And I always, I'll never forget this, is what the correctional officers here in Santa Ana said to me way back when, a lot of people don't know this, but I applied to be a correctional officer way back when, made it to the third interview, and then got a teaching job, so I became a teacher. But I remember the training was this, was, and it was all the way through. Everyone has someone in their family somewhere down the line that has made a mistake somewhere. They're still human, they're still someone's son, daughter, so forth, and we treat them with dignity, and we give them their value, and that's why we don't have incidents here, is because of the way we treat our inmates when they come in. And I think it's the same way, that if we can also put that out into our common, everyday practices at our police department, it just creates more goodwill. Something that occurred over, I think it was last week or the week before, that many don't know about, but police officers went to a Baptist church, mostly African-American Baptist church, I think Congresswoman Loretta Sanchez was there as well, and they had service together, they prayed together, at the end, they broke bread together. And again, it's being proactive, it's getting to know your neighbors, it's getting to know who people are, and I think we're moving in that direction. So let's continue that healthy conversation based on, really, at the end of the day, is how to police and work together as a community. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, for your comments, and Commander Vermontes, I echo the chief's comments and his recognition accolades here in that this is a concept. I think it was also about maybe 12 months or so ago, maybe a little over that, where there were a lot of, a number of different incidences that were being seen throughout the country and as a, collectively as a city, both council, staff, members of the department, we're looking at, how do we respond? And ultimately, as Councilman Dinahero referenced, creating something that is a win-win. We do have, by and large, our officers, you know, a lot of them are homegrown, a lot of them are here from within the community, a lot of them either grew up here, have family here, they got into this business, this career, with this idealistic mindset. They wanted to go out and do good, and they still want to go out there and do good, and we need to be able to provide them the tools so that when incidents come up, they're protected and their names can be exonerated, and at the same time, for our public to also know that they're being, it goes to the next item, you know, this customer service, that there is that level of accountability as well, and that there is a both-and, both the officers are, have tools and protection there, the community does as well, and ultimately, we're being able to see good service and support to our law enforcement. So the fact that we're at this point where it's pretty much the tail end of the process, looking forward to having this come to fruition. Appreciate your leadership and working through all that, going out to the community, getting community feedback. It's been a very comprehensive process. I feel like we've done it well, and it's coming along nicely, so looking forward to, again, implementation. Thank you for the updates and your due diligence and all the work around this. If there are no other comments from committee or staff, then we can go ahead and move to Item Number Four, which is customer service improvements related to police operations. And just as a little bit of background, this is an item that in conversations with the police chief, we're looking at, again, we have a lot of officers, by and large, department, whether it be officers, communications, that are very much committed to our city, to doing well. There are always opportunities for improvement, and we always want to make sure to be looking at that. What are best practices? What are out there? Every so often, we do hear some of that feedback, some of what was referenced, for example, earlier with regard to communications, and in some cases, you know, there are, we just must own the fact that there are times where we have to go back and provide some correction to whoever, where there is an incident that needs to be reflected back to that employee so that there is, there are improvements there. Other times, there is situations that are not, where the facts don't necessarily corroborate the accounts that's being provided. So this is one of those things where we wanted to look at, get a report with, as it relates to customer service, where we are, improvements we've made, and just look at, look towards a future as well. With that, Chief?
Yes, Commander Gonzalez will be providing an update as to where we're at with some of the customer service improvements we've made inside our facility. There's still more work to be done, and, you know, as you stated, from time to time, an incident comes up where we may have to provide some counseling to staff, whether it's sworn or non-s sworn staff, but we do take customer service very seriously, and we have to constantly strive to provide that best possible service regardless of what the situation is or the frustration level on either end of the phone or within that interaction. So I'll turn it over to Commander Gonzalez for a brief presentation.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, councilmembers, Dinahero and Benavides. Customer service is something that is ongoing, will always be ongoing, we can never settle and, you know, never strive to improve. Councilman Benavides, you're absolutely right. Members of this police department are products of this community, and we do care about the fact that, you know, our community respects and values the service that we provide, so we are always looking for opportunities to improve. As I go through the list, I will go through each bureau, just to kind of give you an idea of some of the improvements that have been made. I will begin with the Field Operations Bureau. As you know, the Civic Center has become a topic of interest in looking to safeguard not only community members, but as well as employees who work here in the city. Part of the customer service improvement that we did to be able to inform members of the community here in the Civic Center was the creation of the Nixle account that provides situational awareness on a variety of issues that are affecting the Civic Center area. We've also transitioned the fee collection for vehicle storage, vehicle storages to tow companies, allowing individuals who have to pay those fees to bypass an unnecessary trip to the police department to further streamline that process so they can get their vehicles back. We've also implemented a community engagement portal, and we've created a community-oriented policing event calendar on our department website. We do have it up on the screen, but the presentation isn't there, but it's available for individuals to see what programs are ongoing, what is going on in the community, to maybe pique the interest, to basically encourage participation from our community members. We've also since kind of revamping our community-oriented policing strategies. We've created or restarted the Community/Citizens Academy, which started earlier this year. We were very, we received a very successful response. We had about 12 individuals who initially signed up for Class 1, that was the inaugural class, and what we noticed was that people weren't necessarily sure what was going to happen in this academy, but through Commander Gominski's leadership, our advertising of the actual class, we are now in Week 7 of the second class, which has more than doubled, so we're over about 24, 25, is that right, Ken? Class participants. These are members of the community that volunteered to come out and to get a taste of what law enforcement is like so that, you know, when there are issues in the community, they at least have some sort of background to fall back on when looking at the police situations. We also have active police volunteers who are partnering with code enforcement to address, you know, broken window theory concerns, to be able to maybe supplement code enforcement, to provide them that information as it relates to neighborhood issues, the quality of life type issues that a lot of folks in our community, you know, like to voice concerns over, and those volunteers help supplement our code enforcement efforts as well. That effort is done through our senior volunteer group. They patrol neighborhoods, they follow up on area community complaints, and again, it's through that partnership with code enforcement and the police department that we're able to adequately address some of these quality of life issues that are brought up. We're also still actively offering cert classes within the city of Santa Ana. Steve Reiner, who's our emergency operations coordinator, provides community members with strategies in order to be better prepared for any type of disaster or event in the city. So that's an area in field operations, investigations.
Commander, as, I see this as a potential, as an item that would be, that will be able to potentially come back as we continue to look at progress. So I'd like to, just in the interest of time, and again, I do apologize that I got tied up, I was not able to arrive earlier, but what I'd like and ask you to do is if you could maybe highlight that, you know, two, three key bullets, and we can go back and digest some more of this information in each of the bureaus, and then provide, that way we can have a little bit of time, as council, to reflect back any thoughts, but if you can do that, I'd much appreciate it.
Okay, no worries. So we'll go to the Investigations Bureau. One of the big things that we did to implement better services, to have an onsite social service worker and CSP advocate located within the bureau. That actually has expedited the referral process for our victims who do get victimized in our society and provide them with that added resource because of the onsite staff on hand. Gangs is something that we continuously are working on as well, and, you know, we've implemented a customer service line where individuals can report information confidentially and provide that much-needed tip during some of these critical investigations. Communications, one of the front lines of communication with the department, members calling into the agency. We understand that a lot of members of our community don't always understand the stressors that are going on in dispatch. What we've started implementing was asking our dispatchers to go out to community neighborhoods to talk to members of the community, to kind of hear their concerns, but also so that the dispatchers can relate to them, kind of what is going on in that dispatch center, why they ask the questions that they ask, why they don't sometimes seem to be as caring as they are. And Commander Gominski and his Citizens Academy does an excellent job in running community members through the call-taking process of an in-progress call, again, just to broaden that perspective from the community as to why certain things occur the way they do within the organization. We've also taken the time to implement customer service training for dispatchers. You know, sometimes they do need a refresher on, you know, what it means to be involved in customer service and to provide it, and right now, we're at a rate of about 50%, where we've gotten half of our dispatchers through some sort of customer service, formalized training with the goal of having 100% participation. And that, again, that is an ongoing training that, you know, our supervisors go through almost daily to try to encourage, you know, that mindset of customer service. Now on to the Jail Bureau. Just real quickly, we've added an hour of public visitation. Again, this was based on requests. We've also streamlined the process by which we identify and categorize visitors so we can streamline those sections. PD records, again, we've provided some additional access to those members so that we can further provide information to individuals who are calling in to get information as it relates to whatever records-type request they have. And lastly, it's not on the sheet here, I was asked by Chief Rojas to kind of conduct and look into some of the options out there for a customer service type situation. I did a brief cursory search. There are a variety of ways that we could do that, and, you know, we're going to continue to look down the path, because you can go as easy as putting something on the web to formalize a survey, but again, it's something that, you know, at the chief's direction, your direction, we're going to, you know, further explore to be able to come up with something that is not only beneficial but is efficient so that we can quickly analyze the information that we're receiving from members of the community as it relates to the service they receive.
Thank you, Commander. Councilman, any?
I'm thinking. Go ahead.
So I do have some thoughts. Thank you for the report, the updates, and the measures that have been taken, I know you've, within the different divisions. And again, it's, there's always room for growth, and it's always important that we take a step back and evaluate wherever, any of our respective professions, roles, everything, every role that we have, right? There's books on parenting, on relationships, on, you know, business principles, and there's the best and most effective people in any role is those who are continuously learning and improving. There have been, there were some comments that some of our public made mention of, and one of the questions was around surveys, and there is, any time that we, we can all assume that we're doing a great job, or maybe assume, or think that we might not be doing a very good job at a certain task, and until we take a pause and evaluate- and evaluate it, we won't truly know what the experience that's being had. So that is something that I think would be something that we should look into. I was actually, I had an opportunity to serve as the OCFA Board Member, one of the directors there when Santa Ana initially joined the Orange County Fire Authority. And in going through and learning about the whole operations, you know, Chief Anderson, one of the things that stood out to me is the fact that there are surveys to every call for service that the resident then receives a survey where they can provide some feedback, some input. And then there's, every month, there is an overall, you know, tally and response that there's, it's overall, and then it's by division as well, and you can go, you know, as deep and as you would like with regard to information, feedback. And it was something that was very helpful to be able to see. And I know it's a different approach when, you know, the fire authority typically is coming out to provide aid in a situation with a fire, emergency or accident or something, some sort. Law enforcement, we've got both, that assistance. And then there's that other situation where they're engaging in a situation where you've got to, you know, pick up the bad guys, take them away. So I imagine there's a way to survey that. I don't necessarily a bad guy would respond and give you, you know, a five-stars that's arrested. However, at the same time, there is something to be said for how a person is treated when they are, you know, being detained. And so there, I'm certain there are services, ways for us to be able to provide some of that feedback, and I would encourage us to look at that. We have, when it comes to customer service, we have stellar officers and personnel who are out there doing a great job, to the degree that we can prioritize and highlight those situations, those incidences, those officers internally within the department. And also an opportunity for us as council and members of the community to be able to see that, and perhaps even look at ways to incentivize that positive feedback, you know. Again, getting back to measuring, how we, things that we measure, you know, will be able to improve. Officers also face a lot of situations over the years. I know that there are cultural sensitivity training that's provided in the academy. But, you know, once, one thing, it's theoretical, you're in the academy. Another thing is when you're out there and you're coming across, you know, these difficult situations time and time and time again. You know, we all get kind of sensitized to, you know, a certain situation that we are experiencing that we have. So looking at ways for us to provide that support as well to our officers, that refresher, that way to bring in, you know, potentially some support, training, professionals that would be able to provide, you know, again, some of that coaching, the best practices that are, there are a number of best practices out there for us to, I'm glad that you're looking at some of those things. Appreciate you, Chief, looking at that. And so I think that there's a way for us to provide some type of an overall, you know, approach at continuing to enhance our customer service and community engagement. The, one of the, I saw actually some information on the city of Phoenix that had, did some work around that. So I think we have somebody within our staff that has a little bit of information back on around the city of Phoenix, and we can get some input on as well. So those are some thoughts. I'd like to be able to bring this item back for discussion. Some of it, I think, will roll into the next item as well, which is a community-oriented policing update. But I wanted to give Councilman Tenac another.
No, thank you, Councilmember Benavides. I think I had a chance a while back to go and, at that time, see what it was. I've been on ride-alongs with patrol, I've been on ride-alongs with the, with our SWAT team and Strike Force. Those have been very enlightening. I also had an opportunity to tour our jails a few times and to go see the dispatch room for our police department, and then the dispatch room from our old fire department. It was night and day, you know, and this other, it was high intensity, things are moving over here. You know, they were having pumpkin pie and, you know, a little latte. It was just a, you know, it was different. It was different, different atmosphere, you know. I'm not saying neither one was better or the other, it was just different, you know, two different cultures. But one of the things that, it's very, you know, I have relatives who are police officers, I have friends who are police officers. And so I always tried to listen and hear their stories, and it's a very, it's a very challenging profession, because every night, you're out there, and you're disrespected constantly. People are constantly yelling and saying things to you and so forth. And for our dispatchers, it's of high stress as well. The decisions that you make in a timely fashion may determine whether someone lives or someone doesn't live. And so those things are important. So when we have jobs like that, and they are jobs that we respect and admire, I think it's important for our department, we've talked about training, we've talked about everything else, is that we also start to document. And we start to really document when there is the time for assessing an employee. And if an employee is not starting to move in the direction that you, the leadership, is moving towards, that we start to work towards either more training for that individual. And ultimately, you have to make a decision. They're either not built for that job, and they need to find a different career. And so that's something that, at the end of the day, you know, in teaching, you have two years. And after two years, if you don't show that you can do this, they let you go. And they don't have to have a reason. And I'm taking administrative courses right now, because I'm trying to get my administrative credential as well. And one of the things that, very first class, they brought in one of the most stellar principals in Orange County. And she said, she said, "Don't be afraid." She says, "This is the motion, this is where you're going. Don't be afraid to remove someone off the bus. They're going to hate you for it, because you can't tell them why you're not hiring them back. They're going to only hear that individual's side. They're not going to hear your side, because you can't talk about it. But trust me, at the end of the day, they'll forget about that person, and they will be happy that you have the right people in place." Because at the end of the day, it's the reputation of the department. I look at, I look at an officer, the individual in Ferguson. I remember teaching the government class, and the kids were quick to, you know, to engage. I said, "Chill out. I'm on a city council. Trust me, nobody knows what happened. Not yet. None of the public, the media, no one knows. We're going to wait until the investigation comes back." You guys remember that officer had to quit his job. Remember that? Investigation came back. African-American was watching, witness. Shot, he hears a shot go off. He sees that it's in the cop car, and he thinks, "Oh, my God, I just witnessed the shooting of a police officer." He sees a suspect leave. Then he sees the officer get up and chase him. Then he sees the suspect turn around and charge the officer at that point. He just discharged his gun in the car. His DNA was in the car, the gunpowder was in the car, the bullet remains were in the car. So everything we heard in the media was not accurate. According to what you saw there, we could argue that it was a justifiable shooting. But that officer who did the protocol, who followed the protocol, had to give up his job. Why? Because there has been so much, so many times, in other, in other agencies, where cover-ups have come up, or think people have been found out, and there's the age of cameras, and there's a level of distrust. So I think the first element of trust comes from making sure that we are holding people accountable, because you have a very strong department. I remember a few years back in 2008, when Obama got, was about to, was, the election was coming near, one of the first African-American teachers in Orange County, Ms. Roder, she's in the Hall of Fame and the whole bit, she was my second-grade teacher. And I've told stories about her. I love this woman. She really did a lot for me. And so I'm at the registrar voters, and I see her. And I said to her, "Hey," because I voted early, because I knew the lines were going to be long. I said, "Ms. Hill, what's happening?" It used to be Ms. Roder, it's changed to Hill. She says, "You're going to vote for Obama?" I said, "Heck, yeah, I'm going to vote for Obama." You know, I said, "I wouldn't have it any other way." I said, "I can't believe I'm going to be here sitting with you to vote for the first African-American president." And I said to her, "The only thing that worries me," and this is back in 2008, I said, "Is that someone might do something to him, might hurt him?" And she said, "Sal, I was the first African-American teacher in Orange County." She says, "I lived through the 50s, I lived through the 60s." She says, "What you're seeing now is a movement." She says, "And it's the youth. It's not our generation. The youth said, 'This is the kind of change we want.'" She says, "Let me tell you from experience, you cannot stop, a bullet cannot stop that movement." And that resonated with me. That resonated, that no matter what happened, if something did happen to that individual, this movement was going to continue. I bring that tonight, I bring that story up tonight, because the new generation of voters, the 18-year-olds, 19-year-olds, all the way to, you know, their 30s, have a different mindset. And that mindset is not changing, and it's going to continue to move in that direction. And the mindset is, is that the way that we used to do things 20 years ago, 30 years ago, is very different to what they're going to dictate going into the future. One of the things that I've been very proud of in Santa Ana is we're always ahead. We're ahead of people. You know, we do things first, and we try things first. And so I just want to continue to encourage our department to continue to be first. Because we'll make mistakes, and we'll learn from those mistakes. But at the end of the day, we'll be further along than others around us, and we could be the ones that people point to. So anyhow, I just want to thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Appreciate that, Councilman Tenajero. So, Chief, if we could bring this item back, let's continue to do a little bit of diligence, a little bit of research, a little bit of some best practices, look at ways that we can, taking some of the feedback, and some of the ideas, and some of the work that has already been commenced, let's bring this item back on the agenda. Let's move on to then item number five, and I think we'll probably only have time to do that, that one. We have gotten some reports previously with regard to hiring, some updates, and appreciate some of the traction and the updates around that. But just in the interest of time, we've got, and I've got a commitment here very soon.
Brevity is my middle name.
Please, yes. And I wanted to make sure to touch on this, because there were members of the community that specifically addressed this, so Commander Gominski, if you can give us a brief.
So, in an effort to make sure that our community-oriented policing survey was community-based, I did or was fortunate enough to have two very, very strong and willing partners from the community who assisted in putting on all of the community forums that occurred over the last year. Mr. Schmidt was one of the leaders of that. All of the forums were put on with the knowledge, understanding, and in cooperation with our research partner, which is Chapman University. Right before summer started, we all sat down and had a meeting at a Starbucks to discuss collating the data, what it was going to look like, what we were going to try to come up with themes that could then be used as focus group questions. The research partner made agreements that we were going to get together and things were going to happen over the summer. However, went on sabbatical, and we lost the summer. With that being said, I have a new timeline established with the research partner. And all that I'm waiting for at this point is, is to get a contract amendment through the city attorney's office. And then as soon as that is done, we will be back on track, and I'll be in a position to provide you with what that timeline looks like. I am very, very excited with the amount of information that was gathered out of the community forums. I believe that they were successful, because they were community-driven. It wasn't a police or a city initiative, it was a community initiative. And as Chris brought up earlier, the research partner is reaching out to all of the people who showed interest in being part of the focus groups, to let them know that the research partner wasn't there, it was their fault, and they still want to be heard. With that said, I'll answer any questions you have. It's on me.
Any questions? The only thing is, if you could provide us, okay, here's a, it's written here, some of the information I had with regard to the forums, when, where they were located and such. So we'll go ahead and follow up with any additional questions. It sounds like there's a revised timeline that we will be, that will be created and that we can be provided with at a subsequent meeting.
And at the request of the residents, who have been very, very involved, the timeline will have dates associated with it.
Okay, yeah, perfect. No, thank you for the work, and for the residents, the community that have been a part of this process. We definitely want to move forward. Again, this actually is, can be seen as rolled into the other item with regard to customer service. At the end of the day, community-oriented policing is that partnership between the police and the community to be able to provide enhanced service and good working relationship, and which, again, at the end of the day, it's positive customer service and engagement. So let's agendize this again for, once we get a little bit more information with specific timelines, so we can see the progress there. With that, if there are no other comments, we can go ahead and adjourn. And we do have the update here with regard to the police officer hiring. Thank you for that information. No other comments from, perfect. Okay, great. Thank you all.